Rudy must have hit a couple of lights. He usually is pulling in by now.
He usually hit one minute up, I don't understand it. How come he's not here at one minute up?
Must have been bad traffic.
Yep. It's at the bottom of their package, so they may not have noticed it. We are live because it's seven o'clock.
Okay, I'd like to call the 7:00 PM work session meetings to order. We have a roll call, Nancy, please?
Mr. Boonstra? Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Melchiong?
Here.
Mr. Shanley?
Here.
And Mayor Madigan.
Ah, here. Nancy, can you read the open work session statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This regular work session meeting of the Whitehall Township Committee is now in session. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting appears on our annual schedule of meetings. A copy of said annual schedule has been posted on the bulletin board in Memorial Town Hall. Copy has been filed with the municipal clerk and has been posted on our municipal website. A copy has also been emailed to the Record, the Ridswood News, and the North Jersey College News, all newspapers having its general circulation throughout the township of Whitehall. At least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting, the agenda thereof was similarly posted, filed, and emailed to said newspapers.
Okay, uh, thank you. I see we still have vouchers to be signed, so we'll have to get those signed and get them confirmed, uh, shortly. And then before we make a motion to open the public, we'll make a couple of statements, please. First, I'd like to welcome, uh, Dave Becker. Uh, Dave will be serving as, uh, new township attorney. Uh, Dave has an impressive, uh, background in law, real estate, land use. He has been serving as a zoning board attorney for several years, and he's a Whitehall resident in good standing, and we're happy to, uh, welcome aboard. Thank you. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Abby Bernstein, who's been, uh, filling in the last, uh, several meetings and been available to us, will continue to be available to us. Want to thank him for his, uh, service to the township. And, uh, I went to see him last week and personally thanked him behalf of the governing body of the township for, for his service. We greatly appreciate it. Also, as a follow-up to our last meeting about the possibilities for a crosswalk across Whitehall Ave from Spring Meadows, um, I'd like to have Scott Fisher and Rudy Boonstra work together along with our police chief and Matt Cavallo. Rudy would be the liaison from the police committee, and Scott has a lot of background. And I know Mr. Litt was interested in finding out or pursuing additional information and rather than continue to have a meeting here, a meeting there, if they would be on the subcommittee. Maybe that could help us, uh, circle the wagons, dot the i's, cross the t's as we move forward. And, uh, the last thing is, I just want to, uh, mention to everybody, schools are open. They opened this week, and I just urge everybody to be cautious, and I wish all the students and the staff, the teachers, a productive and safe year. Okay, now I'd like to have a motion to open the meeting, ten-minute public comment periods. Ten-minute public comment, two minutes per speaker for public comment, and any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the township of Whitehall.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Boonstra?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Madigan?
Uh, yes.
With an affirmative vote, the motion is approved.
Anybody wishing to address the public? Please go forward.
Janet Chumi, 501A, Aspen Lane. I was wondering, uh, if any of the members know about the Franklin Lakes, uh, situation, if that was, uh, finally settled?
I think it's still evolving. Making changes. I know they kept postponing meetings. I know, Tim, you had mentioned you've been to a couple of meetings.
Yeah, I was at the last meeting, so it'll be part of my report.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That's all for now.
Anybody wishing, anybody else wishing to address the governing body? Seeing an unclear motion to close to the public?
Motion to close.
Second?
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Melchiong?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Madigan?
Uh, yes.
With an affirmative vote, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Um, can we have a review of our 8:00 PM business meeting agenda and policy action items? Matt, please?
Uh, ordinances are, uh, the agenda's a little out of order this evening, uh, and it's just because of the, uh, appointments that we have at our eight o'clock meeting of the, for the special police officers for our schools. So the first ordinance, uh, for a public hearing, uh, is an ordinance to provide for a, uh, capital improvement for a hundred twenty-five thousand. Uh, that's for the, uh, restrooms at Memorial Field. Uh, that's partially being funded, uh, I believe seventy-five thousand dollars from the Burton, uh, sorry, from the New Jersey Local Recreation Improvement Grant through the DCA, uh, and the rest coming out of open space funds. The second ordinance, uh, amends our Police Department Table of Organization, um, to specifically allow for the hiring of Special Threes. And the reason why this is taken out of order is technically this ordinance should be passed first, then the resolution should be passed, hiring the officers, and then we swear them in. Just due to the timing, the fact that school's open this week, that's why this is all taking place in that order. A third ordinance, uh, is amending our current Chapter 183 Water Emergencies, uh, and replacing it with a new Chapter 183, pretty much, uh, setting the water restrictions at what has been Phase Two in our current ordinance as the standard and eliminating Phase One, or, yeah, Phase One. Um, and then finally, uh, third ordinance, 1994, um, amends our qualifications for, uh, employment as a full-time police officer in our police department. There are several ordinance, uh, sorry, several resolutions. Uh, 294 authorizes a contract, um, for our financial advisor and our continuing disclosure agent. This has, this has to do with our, um, uh, capital debt. We have a reporting that has to be done to the federal government. Uh, this, uh, advisor, uh, helps us with that. 250 closes, uh, completed, uh, capital grants. We have several, uh, projects where we have, um, grants that have been, uh, open for several years, and there's no, uh, money, uh, left to be expended or to be received. Uh, 253, uh, the County of Bergen has advised us that, uh, they will be continuing their program of removing, uh, emergency removal of trees in the county right-of-way. Uh, that has been standard for a while, whenever we call and ask, uh, say that there's a tree. However, we have to sign a whole harmless agreement with them to do that now for each individual tree. So this resolution authorizes myself to sign the agreement on behalf of the town every time we have a, uh, a tree that needs to be taken down by the county so we can get it done in an expeditious manner. Um, 250, again, it has to be done for every single tree. They're gonna say what, where it is, uh, right, right on it. So it's not like, uh, a standard blanket agreement. Uh, 254 authorizes, um, Contract 2023-09, which is contract number two for the Flexi-Pave at Russell Farms Community Park. In 2019, the count, the, uh, town received a grant, uh, with, and with including matching funds, was, uh, ninety thousand dollars for the installation, the finishing of the Flexi-Pave at Russell Park. If you recall, about three meetings ago, we awarded another contract, um, and, um, we had, with, because we got such a good price from the company, um, we went out to bid again to use up the rest of that grant and close up that grant. So, uh, this contract award will, uh, use up the, the rest of that 2019 grant plus seven thousand dollars roughly from the open space trust fund, and we'll close that project out. 2023-10 authorizes, uh, building material purchase for the police field maintenance pole barn. Went out to bid for that. We expected the bid to come in, um, under the bid threshold, about fifteen thousand dollars, but, uh, with other, all the other projects we've had going on this year, we've started approaching our thresholds with, with some of our vendors, so we went out to bid. Uh, we received a bid for, uh, I believe just under eight thousand for the purchase of that material. I'll have an update on that in my report coming next. Uh, we have a change order for the road improvement program, which is ongoing right now. This is a zero-dollar change order. It's strictly a materi, it's a materialistic change order, uh, changing the, um, date, the substantial completion date required in the contract from last Friday, uh, to, next Friday. Uh, and the reason for that is, uh, we worked out an agreement with the vendor that they're going to pave West Main Street on a Saturday as to cause the least interruption to the businesses on West Main Street. So West Main Street will get paved this Saturday, weather permitting. And the change order changes the, uh, completion date of the contract to next Friday, weather permitting. So if there is a delay and we need to change it, the, the date will get automatically moved. Uh, 257, as I mentioned, is authorizing the appointment of our Special Three Police Officers. These are, uh, six officers that are, um, hired for the school year to be placed in our five, uh, K-8 schools and also one at St. Elizabeth's School.
Five, the four, yeah, K-8s, we had four grammar schools, one at the middle school and one at St. Elizabeth's.
All right. Uh, 258 authorizes a professional service appointment. This is the appointment of our town attorney for the remainder of the year. And 259 closes out the affordability assistance program grant with Christian Help for the renovations of Evergreen Court Apartment Number Twenty-Seven. Moving on to the next section, ordinances. 1995 and 1996 are both gonna be pulled from the agenda for, uh, additional work that needs to get done by our professionals. And there are several motions, which will get read into the record at our eight o'clock meeting, and that is all I have for review of the agenda. Before I move on, any questions?
Any members of the governing body have any questions?
Nope. Um, reminder that garbage collection has gone back to once-a-week collection, starting yesterday. The nine-eleven ceremony will be held on Monday, this upcoming Monday, at 6:30 PM at Fire Company Number One with a potluck to follow. The fireworks will be held on Friday, uh, Saturday, sorry, Saturday, September 23rd at dusk here at Memorial Field. Snacks Den will be open, uh, so bring your appetite. Uh, I believe that, um, where else are we? Note sale. We had a note sale last week, uh, for a nine-month rollover of our, of our, uh, notes, uh, five million, four hundred and forty-three thousand. Uh, we received a, a note percent, uh, an interest rate of four point zero nine percent. It's a lot different from where the notes were two years ago. Two years ago, we were looking at one and one and a half percent.
One and go.
So, uh, paving is progressing, uh, and as I already mentioned, the recycling center will be closed on Saturday, this Saturday, due to the paving of West Main Street. Uh, with regard to our 2024 calendar, there are three ad spots left. Anybody interested in purchasing an ad, or if you know anybody interested in purchasing an ad, uh, please reach out to Denise Capirelli in, uh, my office. The police pole barn, police and field maintenance pole barn, which we awarded, I believe, back in May, uh, will be, uh, delivered and starting construction next week. Uh, in preparation for the Flexi-Pave projects at Russell Farm. DPW has been there, uh, today, and I believe they'll be again there again tomorrow, doing some minor repairs to the drainage on the north side of the park. And new signs have been ordered for Community Park and the rules and regulations sign at the Gardens of Whitehall. And if you've also noticed that the entrance sign at the Gardens of Whitehall has been missing, we took it down. It's being refurbished, and as soon as it's refurbished, it'll be put back up. And that's all my report.
Thank you. Township Committee reports? You wanna go first?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I want to welcome Dave Becker as our new township attorney. Dave, uh, Fire Department, there's been, uh, four hundred and forty-two calls year-to-date since our last meeting. They assisted on, uh, two mutual aid calls. Um, Matt mentioned the nine-eleven ceremony this coming Monday night at Fire Company One. Uh, Fire Company One is having their beach party fundraiser. I always say it's one of the best fundraisers you could attend this, uh, this Thursday over at the, uh, at the Y by the lake there. Uh, Company Two is having their poker night fundraiser on Sep, September, uh, Saturday, September 30th. Uh, the Environmental Commission, they had no, uh, August meeting. Uh, we have a fireworks committee, Matt touched on that. And just also, uh, DPW, the shredding bins are now open and available down at the, uh, recycling yard to bring your, uh, material to be shredded, and that's all I have.
Shred Fest Friday, right?
Oh, and Shred Fest is this Friday from nine, is it nine or eight? Nine AM to? Nine to eleven at, uh, Community Park.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Rudy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I really don't have any, any to report, other than, I have a few updates on sewers. The Tru-Hune Drive, Sycamore Ave project is moving forward. Some materials have been delivered to DPW, um, yard, um, for that project. We're getting into the final phases of permitting and engineering. We had, we're not unfortunately able to capture the summer school closing time to, to do the installation, which should begin shortly, and, uh, we'll have to work around the school schedule to get that done. Uh, the engineering is underway for the Wild Duck Road, Morley Drive Sewer Connection as we speak. That should be completed soon. We could get that, um, in there. Other than that, I would just like to, uh, welcome and congratulate Dave Becker as our new township attorney. Welcome, Dave. Great to have you here. Hope everyone had a great summer and, uh, welcome back. And, um, I just, I'm gonna say a word now, um, about, um, the, uh, the three police officers. I want to thank the Police Department, um, Chief Becker, his officers. They were given a pretty short win.
I do that with my kids.
Chief Murphy. Gave you a promotion, right? Chief Murphy, his, his officers, they had a pretty short window to get all this done this summer. I may make some remarks later, but they had a pretty short window to get all this done, and they, he really worked hard on it, and, um, they have, um, everyone in place, um, which we'll, we'll, uh, square them in later. I also want to thank the school administration and, uh, board members from the school, uh, Whitehall School Board and, uh, from St. Elizabeth's Church for their cooperation and, uh, working with the police, um, their outreach and working with the, uh, Police Committee and the Police Department to get all this done. Great job. Thank you.
Scott?
Uh, one's a follow-up. Matt, before I went on vacation, I received an email from a lady on Hill Street. Are you aware of that? She had problems with the concern to the easement in the backyard. There's a row of trees from the developer back there. It's, um, what is that? What is the factory down there, right behind Hill Street?
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about.
There. Garden State Farm.
Yes, you did come to see me about that.
All right. So Joseph was able to get down there and then got Fred involved?
Yes.
I did a follow-up out to her yesterday, and, um, she thanked us for apparently a tree being removed across the street, but not really any activity to the rear yard. We can just have Fred follow up on that for her. Let me know.
Fred is on vacation, he speaks.
I'll, I'll follow up on that.
I know Fred had, did something.
Yeah, Fred's on vacation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good. Um, the other was, uh, Mr. Mary, I think you're in contact with the ladies that are looking to donate a tree, and they've switched out to a bench?
Yeah, it's all done.
Yeah, I spoke to her on the phone too, 'cause I know her personal friends, Heather. So.
That's why I called you last Monday, but I did it with Joe Frye, so we're good.
That's fine. I just, I offer my services to her if she, uh, needed any assistance.
Appreciate it.
Yep, she's very nice. So, um, Dave, I wish you welcome. Um, good luck, I know you'll do a fine job. I know we've had some history back in the days of planning board, so I look forward to working with you in the future, and, uh, best of luck to you here. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the zoning board did meet, and the only thing that is worthy of reporting to, of the Township Committee, is the, um, property at 714 Godwin Avenue. Part of the property is in Whitehall, so that it had to come before the zoning board for them to review as to whether or not they would take any action. It was a single-family home in Midland Park. They, Midland Park Zoning approved a four affordable housing units for U.S. military service vet, veterans. Um, and the only pro, the only portion of the property that's in Whitehall is not being built. So the zoning board, uh, made the decision that there wasn't anything they needed to do, and if anybody who was there to speak on it may come to us to talk about it, 'cause I think there's issues as to whether or not the, um, water runoff is going to affect any of the housing in, any of the houses in Whitehall. Um, because the engineers said that it won't, but they're concerned if there's a bigger storm than all these, um, seepage pits can handle, what, what can be done? And I think they're gonna give some kind of easement, uh, to Whitehall, uh, drainage easement, um, but the only issue is whether or not that's gonna make us have to maintain the, um, the easement. So Dave, if you can?
Excuse me, excuse me one minute.
Yeah.
Okay, so before we have Dave, I know you had called me on it?
Yeah.
I looked into it, and it's my, then I gotta sw, flip it over to Dave. It was my understanding and several people's understanding that that property now has, and Dave can comment on it, some sort of a water preserve in the back that ensures that all the water is trapped, and there should not be an issue, but now, Dave, do you? Can you comment on it?
Quick background.
Yes.
This, this application went to Midland Park probably over a year, more than a year ago initially.
Correct.
They turned it down. They took a prerogative writ, went to Superior Court, but there's a case law out there that you could actually work a settlement, which they did, but the settlement was they had to come back and they made changes to the application. They reapplied to Midland Park. During the whole process, they did come to Whitehall and say, "What's your position? Are you going to waive your rights?" This was the first app. We said, "No." This was to the zoning board. We were not gonna waive our rights, 'cause we didn't know anything about it. We told them, based upon what the board told me, I did a letter to their attorney, the first attorney, was that you can apply now, you can do it simultaneously, or if you get approval, you can come later. Again, that one got denied. They went back, they got approval the second time around. They sat on it for a couple of months. They never came to us right away, and all of a sudden, I get a call from the attorney saying, "Uh, you, you guys are gonna waive your rights, right?" I said, "No, we, we, right now I'm hearing for the first time you got the approval on the second round. Uh, it's up to the board what they want to do." The board took the position is, "Let's have our engineer review this whole approval." So Mark DiGennaro took, got all the maps, got all the plans, saw what it was there, and he did a review of it and did a memo, which I'm gonna share with the Township Committee. I just gotta reach out to Carl Frye, 'cause he was away. I wanna put together a memo, 'cause I have to get back to Midland Park, or at least the town should. Uh, basically, if I could sum it up, was they've met all the requirements, that it's basically the runoff, it's probably gonna improve, it's not gonna make it worse, because they have to, they have to meet all the standards. Now, that's on the Midland Park property. The Whitehall property itself, nothing's being built there, and they're providing a conservation easement for that. It's been signed, so you can't build there, nothing's going on that property. The other good thing is, you're not responsible for it, but you can look to the owner of the property or Midland Park to take care of that property, that conservation easement. So I think it's a good thing, they're not looking for you to take care of it, but if you're not happy, you can go there. The only issue that, um, the board brought up at our last meeting, and was basically, basically came from Carl Frye, the chairman, was, "There's a pipe running that Mark wasn't sure whether it got inspected or not. It may have been." So his only recommendation would be, maybe Whitehall should go to Midland Park and say, "Did you inspect this pipe that's doing, that could create some runoff or not?" Because it's supposed to, it's not going to, but it didn't say in the report whether they had inspected or not, and we should probably at least make a gesture out to Midland Park to say, "Take a look at that, uh, that issue." But really, the property in Whitehall is not being affected by building, again, it's a conservation easement, and Midland Park and the owner are responsible for taking care of that. And I've reviewed that myself.
After Tim had called that Friday morning, and he left a message, I had also reached out to, uh, a few folks, including Mark, and I know it's all been put together. The best part was actually the improvement on the site, it is wet below there, which is both Midland Park and Whitehall, depending on what the sign of the, the water you want to call it, the stream, or what's there. So.
And, and at the meeting, uh, Pete Tenkate was at the meeting, our last meeting, 'cause Mark was away, the market put together, but he had reviewed some of that as well.
Right.
And basically, his take on it was, it, there's no, there was no improvements for drains before. So it's not gonna make it worse.
Right.
But a good chance it's gonna make it better there. If I can kind of sum up his take.
No, it's perfect, and that helped, because the reason I wanted to bring it up in my report is just in case any of the, the, um, people that were there to object.
You're right.
Might show up at our meeting, and, you know, because it was basically said, "Well, if you got an issue, come to the Township Committee meeting."
Because it really wasn't a zoning matter anymore.
So, that's why I brought it up.
It wasn't really anything for them to handle anymore. If the town was gonna go to Midland Park about that pipe, it's up for the zoning board to tell them, it would be for Township Committee to go and say, "Hey, take a look at that." But they may have already inspected. Mark just wasn't sure when he read the re, did all his review of it.
Okay, excellent.
And I'll provide that memo, uh, after I speak to Carl. I know he was away, so I wanted to go over it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, is, uh, rec, uh, update on rec. The football and cheer are gonna start their season on Saturday, um, here at, uh, Memorial, and I believe they're gonna do a pep rally on Friday night. So the football season is going to start for Whitehall, uh, football and, uh, Whitehall Cheer. So good luck to the boys and girls that are gonna be participating, uh, in, uh, in the football and cheer, and, uh, good luck to them when they start school this week as well. Fireworks meeting, uh, we, we, Matt, um, thank you, uh, Ma, Matt, for, um, organizing that, and, uh, and the, it's an update on the football boosters are the ones who are going to do the, uh, the food, and we got a commitment from Roger Schnorbush, who is still the president of the Whitehall Football, Whitehall Football and Cheer, and he's got volunteers that are gonna be able to do that. And I think he said he would run it till about 8:30 and then close it down right when the fireworks start, so, uh, so we got food, which is good. And one of the things that, uh, we're considering for next year is moving the fireworks to, uh, August. And what was the August date? We had said possibly August 28th to Wednesday? Uh, only so that we don't continue, continually have conflicts with, uh, the Greek Church festival. Yeah, so that we're considering the 28th of August, uh, to do, uh, that type of fireworks. It'll be a little earl, later when we shoot the fireworks off, but it's all to try to avoid, uh, having it on the same night as the Greek Church. I also appeared at the, um, Franklin Lakes Special Meeting regarding the Cigna property. I got there a little late because I had two football scrimmages, one for Ramapo, indeed, Ramapo Football, and one for Whitehall Football, and then I ran after Whitehall Football scrimmage was done over to, uh, the middle school in Franklin Lakes, and the meeting was still going on. And we had both our assembly, uh, we have our Krista Phillips there, and we had, uh, Al Barlis there, as well as our Senator Kristen Carrato. They were at the meeting as well. Essentially, what happened is Franklin Lakes met with the developer, and they decided to get rid of the two massive warehouses that were gonna bring all kinds of trucks up 208 and throughout possibly Whitehall and parts of Franklin Lakes, and they decided to move a, away from that, so it's gonna be just housing and possibly, uh, a, a large federal office building, if that's a possibility. They changed their entire, uh, approval, and I think they did that because they're, were getting, um, possible, uh, rejections, um, on the, the affordable housing front. So they completely changed gears as to what they're gonna do, so now it's a matter of how many, um, housing, uh, units are gonna go there. I think it was close to five hundred, which is a lot. So it's still a problem, and, and one of my problems with it when I spoke is you still don't have a site plan, so we don't know where you're gonna be sending these, you know, people in and out of, and I said, "We're gonna have a problem if you're gonna be sending them onto Lawlands," which is gonna be a problem, because we're not gonna be able to handle all that traffic coming up Lawlands. And they said, "Oh, well, it's, uh, the site plan will be approved when it, when, uh, they do the, with the, run through the planning board." So we gotta keep an eye on it, especially when the site plan comes out. So Franklin Lakes is, their meeting is again tonight, so I don't know if anything different is gonna happen, 'cause they're meeting right now. So that's basically it. That's about all I can give you. The, the good thing is, there's not gonna be these warehouses that are gonna be causing all kinds of problems with tractor trailers around, but that's, that's basically. all kinds of problems with tractor trailers around, but that's, that's basically it. And I got there late, uh, but I got there, so. And I was able to speak, and, you know, and kind of speak about how we really would appreciate having a site plan, because that's, yeah, but they didn't work it that way. But, uh, only other thing I have to report is Ramapo Indian Hills met, uh, last Monday, and it was a long meeting, but they approved the curriculum. And if they didn't approve it at that meeting, the school's year was gonna start without any approved curriculum. So, the good news is my freshmen and my sophomore are gonna have an approved curriculum, uh, before it starts. And I just wanna, and I, I do wanna also report that the Ramapo Varsity Football Team won their first game on Friday night. And it was, it was a last, la, the last play of the game won the game. Uh, it was a touchdown, ended the game. So, it was a beautiful win against a Summers-New York team that hadn't lost in a while. So, it was, it was a good game, and, uh, I, I also have a freshman who played, and they, uh, they beat the Summers team 29-0. So, it was a good start to the football season, and I just wanna wish the boys and the girls that are going back to school a safe and a very productive year. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just a few things. One, uh, we're saddened, and the whole Wyckoff community was saddened to learn of the passing of longtime Washington School Principal, uh, Joe Desiderio. Joe Desiderio was at Washington School my whole tenure, and we still hold the record for 21 consecutive years there. And then he was also the advocate of the middle school, prior to having Eisenhower Middle School was seventh and eighth grade. So, he was a big advocate, that you're better off grades one through five, give the kids a total of middle school experience, six, seven, eight, rather than seven, going to the eight, there you go to high school. And, uh, most importantly, Joe was just a great guy, great community guy, great father, great, uh, just a great, wonderful person. And they're having services, we have September 15th, the wake, and then there's a memorial service at the Reform Church on the 16th. Uh, back to school, as I mentioned earlier, the kids are back to school, and we wish them a safe, a safe year, a solid year. Third thing I wanna mention, uh, people by now would have received their newsletter, or their flyer about information of the town, which highlights our fireworks, September 23rd, which should be a great night. And, uh, I also saw, I saw Roger Schnorbusch today. He's all excited about them doing all the refreshments and, uh, gonna donate the proceeds to the Fire Department, which is very generous. September 11th service, as we mentioned before, is next Monday, Fire Company Number One. It's at, uh, 6:30 PM, and it's hard to believe, it's 22 years, so if you can come out next Monday, if you remember, Wyckoff lost 11 residents. And, um, it's a nice night to reflect, uh, on those folks. And, uh, last thing I have is, um, you know, it's next weekend, but I wanna wish Pete Malkion a momentous birthday, I think it's, what, Sunday, the 10th?
Yeah, the Sunday, yeah.
So, he's having a big birthday, so, happy birthday.
Right.
That's all I have to report. For now. If we have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, did I skip that Township?
That's all right.
That's 'cause I went to the next page, I should've went back.
That's all right.
I wanna introduce Mr. Dave Becker, our Township Attorney, for comments, thoughts?
My real, only comment is, thank you to the board for extending the offer for me to come onboard as your attorney. I'm looking forward to it, and, uh, I love this town, and I've been here now for, I can't believe it, 30 years, so, uh, it's, I've been able to serve in a lot of different roles, I'm really excited about this one. As the mayor said, I'm the zoning board attorney for the last eight, certainly enjoyed that, but like, I'm looking forward to coming over here and working with you. Thank you to Matt, too, he's really been helpful bringing me onboard, I certainly appreciate that. It's always a call away, just with a question I've had, or just getting me, and Nancy's gotten me all the documents, so Nancy, thank you as well for helping me get onboard, so I'm looking forward to being with you over these next few months and hopefully years. Thank you.
Big shoes to fill.
Okay.
Definitely.
Great, thank you, Dave. Okay, now can I have a motion to close the work session, please?
Sure.
Second.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Malkion?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley?